Good morning. Today is Tuesday, the sixteenth day of May. Time is nine o'clock. Board of Commissioners is in session to conduct its weekly open business meeting. All three Commissioners are present. I'd ask everyone to identify yourself with the record starting over here.
Jeremiah Cameron, Ada County Operations.
Bob Carney Operations.
Brad Smith, Assessor's Office.
Noah Hill, Procurement.
Adrian Hammack, Procurement, intern.
Tony Getty, Public Service.
Richard Beck, Development Services.
Trenton Communications.
I T guy.
Beth Mon, Treasure.
Bob Perkins, Ada County Procurement.
Trent Triple, County Clerk.
Well, we have a full agenda. We can go ahead and proceed. Do we have anybody on the bridge we need to introduce? Bethany Calves on the bridge and Noah Hill. Okay, Adam Mann, Clerk, are there any changes to the agenda?
Yes, there are. We need to remove agreement number one five two four zero.
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we amend the agenda to remove agreement one five two four zero from the agenda.
I'll second that.
And I think Bob can explain it if you want, if we need it to.
Go ahead, Bob.
I'm not sure why we're removing this.
Okay, Operation, go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, the reason why we're asking to have this removed from the agenda for this week is because we ran into a problem with the payment performance bonding with the contractor. We need to get that straightened out before we have to guys sign it.
All right, getting out. All right, you've heard the motion. Did we get a second?
Yes.
All right, we got a second. I'll favor say aye.
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 Motion carries. Okay. Now we have a couple of appointments to the Expo Idaho Advisory Board, term to expire nine thirty twenty. We've interviewed Dan Murphy, Murphy and Steve Wilder, and believe that they'll both make a fine addition to the board. Is there any questions or any discussions? Hearing none, I'll accept a motion.
I would move to approve the Volunteer Board appointments to Expo Idaho Advisory Board as identified on the agenda.
I second the motion.
Hey, you've heard the motion. I'll favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. New business procurement.
There we go.
Now, now.
Opening RFP twenty-three oh four seven.
So, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, under new business this morning, we have three items, the first of which is the opening of RFP two-three zero four seven, the Ada County RX Savings Program. And Ada County Procurement received one response for this project. Noah has our Bonfire E Procurement system queued up. If you're ready for us to open up.
We're ready. All right.
So today, Mr. Chairman, we're just looking for the name of the proposer. And there's the proposer. It is Script Sourcing LLC. And that is our sole proposer for the project. So our evaluation committee will take a look at it and make a, come back to make a recommendation. So we'd like to request this be tabled for final ranking and award recommendation to the May thirtieth, two thousand twenty-three open business meeting.
Okay. Where, where is that?
Script sourcing.
Where, where are they from?
Good question. I'm not sure. We will know when we open up the entire package that'll have their address.
Okay. Do we have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move to table the final rankings and award recommendation for RFP twenty-three zero four seven, Ada County RX Savings Program, to May thirtieth, two thousand twenty-three.
I'll second that.
Hey, you've heard the motion. I'll favor say aye.
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 Motion carries. Okay, go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, our, our second item up for your consideration this morning is bid two-three zero five-two, the Ada County Sheriff's Office Crime Lab Remodel, two thousand twenty-three. And for this project, we received four responses. And we would like to submit this letter of the bids received and an award recommendation for your consideration.
You read the letter?
Should be happy to. It's a letter dated May sixteenth, two thousand twenty-three, to the Board of Ada County Commissioners from Ada County Procurement regarding bid two-three zero five-two. Dear members of the board, Ada County Procurement received four responses for bid two-three zero five-two. The following are the names of the bidders and the bid amounts received. Bidder number one is Bill Corporation with a bid amount of forty-nine thousand eight hundred seventy dollars. Bidder number two, Barrier Building with a bid amount of sixty-one thousand six hundred and five dollars. Bidder number three, Excelsior Construction Company with a bid amount of ninety-five thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars. And bidder number four, ACM Alpine Construction Management, they have a bid amount of thirty-four thousand five hundred and thirty-two dollars. So after reviewing the bids submitted, it's the recommendation of the evaluation group to award the contract for bid two-three zero five-two to ACM Alpine Construction Management as the lowest responsive bidder in the amount of thirty-four thousand five hundred and thirty-two dollars.
Okay. I'll accept the motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move to accept the recommendation of the Evaluation Committee and award bid twenty-three zero five-two, Ada County Sheriff's Office Crime Lab Remodel, two thousand twenty-three to ACM Alpine.
Yes, Alpine Construction.
Construction, in the amount of thirty-four thousand five hundred and thirty-two dollars.
Second.
Hey, you've heard the motion. I'll favor say aye.
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 Motion carries. Thank you.
Thanks. So our final item under new business is bid two-three zero five-six, the Ada County Prosecutor's Office Carpet Replacement, two thousand twenty-three. And we received two responses for this project. We would like to submit this letter of the bids received and an award recommendation.
Okay.
Letter dated May sixteenth, two thousand twenty-three, to the Board of Ada County Commissioners from Ada County Procurement regarding bid two-three zero five-six. Dear members of the board, Ada County Procurement received two responses for bid two-three zero five-six. The following are the names of the bidders and the bid amounts submitted. Bidder number one, Dillaboss Flooring America, and they have a total bid amount of one hundred and twenty-one thousand nine hundred and fifty-five dollars. Bidder number two, Wall-to-Wall Commercial Flooring with a bid amount of one hundred and seventeen thousand one hundred and fifty-four dollars. After reviewing the bids submitted, it's the recommendation of the evaluation group to award the contract for bid two-three zero five-six to Wall-to-Wall Commercial Flooring as the lowest responsive bidder in the amount of one hundred and seventeen thousand one hundred and fifty-four dollars.
Okay. Any discussion? I'll accept the motion.
I move to accept the recommendation of the Evaluation Committee and award bid two-three zero five-six, Ada County Prosecutor's Office Carpet Replacement, two thousand twenty-three to Wall-to-Wall Commercial Flooring in the amount of one hundred and seventeen thousand one hundred and fifty-four dollars.
I second the motion.
Hey, you've heard the motion. I'll favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thanks, Commissioners.
All right, we have a change order. Change order number one, Sheriff's Vehicle Shop Roof Replacement. Everybody here wants to talk about that?
I could speak on that.
Okay, go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, this is a detective change order. We finished a project. We had six thousand dollars in contingency money. In case we ran into a problem, we didn't use any of that money. So we need to make a change to the contract so the county can recoup that money.
Okay. As are in further discussion or motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the change order number one to the Sheriff's Vehicle Shop Roof Replacement as listed on the agenda and authorize the Chair to sign the documents on behalf of the board.
Second. Hey, you've heard the motion. I'll favor say aye.
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 Motion carries. Okay, we have next up licenses, which is, includes ten catering permits, one new license, four license transfers and sixty-three renewals. Is there any question or discussion? Not, I'll accept a motion.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the licenses as listed on the agenda, including ten catering permits, one new license, four license transfers, and sixty-three license renewals and authorize the Chair to sign the documents on behalf of the board.
I second the motion.
Hey, you've heard the motions. I'll favor say aye.
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 Motion carries. Now we have our distinguished clerk with us, Mr. Trent Triple.
Mr. Chair, Commissioners, thank you. As you know, probably have a lot on our plate, but right now forefront of our minds is the election going on today. So we have one hundred and thirty-seven precincts, one hundred and nine voting locations. They were all up and running by eight o'clock this morning. Ten of those of note are ballot on demand. So they are printing the ballots at the location rather than us pre-printing the ballots and transporting them out there. This is a trial to see how well we do with this. We didn't want to repeat Maricopa County and doing this at every single precinct and having something go wrong. So we're doing it on a small scale. And so far, so good. It's been working very wonderfully this morning. So we're, we're very pleased with the, the pilot that we're doing. There is a large turnout. And it may be that we have everyone vote in this morning and no one votes the rest of the day. But if things keep up, this will be a very high turnout for this type of election. And obviously the school bond's on there as well as some library trustees positions, which you're all familiar with. So a lot of driving turnout right now.
I'm surprised that West Ada can seek a ten-year levy. I didn't realize they were just sequeleting for that long, but apparently they can.
Yeah.
That's, that's pretty, that's pretty hefty.
Yep.
And there's, how many precincts have no, no voting at all?
There are sixty-two precincts that don't have anything on the ballot. Most of those are Boise proper. There, there is the water district, Warm Springs Water District that is on there. And then Free Ada Library District has just some splotches around Boise. So there's some precincts that are involved with that, but there's quite a few. That, that's our biggest question this election is, how come there's nothing on my ballot?
Okay. All right, again, I, I, I did see, I did see, I saw on TV last night.
Yeah.
I was watching the news.
Yeah.
Giving an explanation.
We had the public LNA last week. And, you know, we invited a lot of people to come out to that. We had, did have some, some, some larger news media that showed up and obviously did some, some interviews and stuff. But the people that continue to throw stones at us just don't want to come out and see what we do, which is unfortunate. It'd be really nice to have them there and kind of walk them through the process and answer their questions. But we'll keep trying.
Well, okay.
That's all I have, Mr. Chair.
All right, any other questions or comments from the clerk? All right, hey, thank you. All right, we have Claims Journal dated May twelfth, two thousand twenty-three. I will accept a motion on the Claims Journal.
Mr. Chairman, I move to authorize payment of the Claims Journal dated May twelfth, two thousand twenty-three.
Second.
Hey, you've heard the motion. I'll favor say aye.
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 Okay, we have Personnel Actions. I'll accept a motion on Personnel Actions.
I move to approve the Personnel Actions as listed on the agenda and that the summary sheet remain on file in the Commissioner's office.
I second the motion.
Okay, you've heard the motion. I'll favor say aye.
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 Okay, next up, we have the Assessor's Office. We have, so we have somebody from the Assessor's Office.
Morning, Commissioners.
Welcome here, Brad.
Another great day.
Another great day in paradise.
So we're preparing to send our, our assessment notices, shooting for Memorial Day weekend. So there'll be kind of hit, a lot, two-hundred-and-twenty thousand of them hitting the mailbox pretty much the week after. So we're working with BDS right now and Auto-Sar, getting everything uploaded. Be reviewing parcels, kind of spot checking later in the week, but everything's going on track, so.
I can't wait.
Pretty exciting day, right?
Yes, exciting, exciting. You think though, now, didn't you say recently that average residential assessment's down about five, six percent?
Based on our latest stats, we're going to be down closer to fifteen, sixteen percent on residential.
In residential.
So you'll see a pretty good tax shift. Everyone always seems to be focused on the tax burden. So this is the first year in a long time that that's actually changing where.
There's an increase in commercial.
Correct.
What's the increase in commercial?
The latest numbers, and don't hold me to this, but it's around thirteen percent median increase, thirteen to fifteen percent of increase in commercial, so.
You think with the reductions, there'll be an increase in protest because they got a tax reduction?
Yeah, we'll, we'll see. There's, there has been some recent articles in the media too, you know, showing that the market, you know, this going.
There was an article just the other day about how that April, April results were up about ten percent, I think it was, just in one month.
Yeah, so it's pretty good uptick.
Bring it up to.
From, from our, from our perspective, I mean, January first, everything's locked in.
It's worth it.
Anything that happens afterwards doesn't matter. But it's always helpful to reduce the number of appeals when we have a positive media attention like that, so.
All right, well, thank you. Now, I see you've got a few tax cancellations.
Yeah, we got six tax cancellations and one casualty loss.
Okay, so should be noted that these are not actual cancellations or just reductions in the tax, but we call them tax cancellation, except in casualty loss.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you. I'll accept a motion on the tax cancellations and casualty loss.
I move to approve the tax cancellations as listed on the agenda and include the two tax cancellations for two thousand twenty-one, four tax cancellations for two thousand twenty-two and one casualty loss and authorize the Chair to sign the documents on behalf of the board.
Second. Hey, you've heard the motion. I'll favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Question, do, do we have a, a idea from the Tax Commission about when we're going to have the two ninety-two data?
Yeah, and I know our treasure probably has more information on this than I do, but pretty much I don't think we're going to get any estimated tax savings from them until it's pretty much tax time when notices are being mailed out. So from, from our perspective, I know Alan has done some research and kind of took a swing at it as far as the savings. So during the BOE, what we're going to try to have is a poster in the back of the room that will kind of be geared around that, the savings off that, which will be, I mean, everything's really up in the air. And there's, you know, they don't have the school, the counts and stuff, which won't come out till August. So a lot of that data gets pushed till, I guess, probably September, so.
I, I just wanted to make sure all the thousands of people that are listening in to our meeting today, so that they wouldn't call us.
All righty.
In wanting to know why we weren't giving them that information, because we don't have it yet, so.
Correct.
Well, the information is also subject to the final, the final tax collections of the state on June thirtieth.
Exactly.
And so nobody knows what that's going to be. I guess the tax collections were down and now they're up a little bit, so. That's varies, because that changes, that's what's going to be the final.
Yeah, there's a lot of.
Lot of moving parts still.
Lot of moving parts, because that's, so that's how that works. All right, thank you.
All righty.
All right, now we have our distinguished treasurer with us.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, Commissioners. So yesterday, we hosted a meet and greet out at our Cloverdale facility. So thank you to Commissioner Daly and I think Bob Perkins and for attending. As you're aware, the scope of services provided by counties is so broad. So really appreciate you taking your time to come and see our operations out there. We will be opening that facility to the public next week to accept property tax payments. And that's a great service to our taxpayers. And I say that because of the positive feedback we receive every year. We leave out comment cards and the comments are overwhelmingly, um, great customer service, but then also convenient location. So this is really helpful to that taxpayer who wants to pay in person, wants to have a receipt. And so this is great for them who live out Meridian or west part of the county who can just drive on up and pay their taxes there. So we'll be doing that next week. That facility will remain open until June twentieth, the due date for the second half, two thousand twenty-two property taxes. And then your question to House Bill two ninety-two?
Right. I was going to ask both of you the same question. Just, just so that the public knows that we are still waiting for information. And we will get it to them as soon as possible, as soon as we have it.
Absolutely. I've been participating more in trainings and meetings with the Idaho State Tax Commission. And just when we look at all the deadlines, when data's going to come in, it's not going to be till after the state closes their fiscal year. It's going to be in August, once ADA average daily attendance has been determined. A lot of different factors and won't know until, for a while. The counties will receive a lot of the data on November sixth, the first Monday of November. So I will note that that is a short turnaround for the tax collector to generate bills. So we're working on some of our programming now so that once we do receive the data, we're able to process it quickly.
Thank you.
Oh, thanks.
All right.
And, and thank you for the tour. Yes, that was very instructive.
Thank you.
All right, anything else for us?
That's it.
Thank you. Thank you, appreciate it. All right, we now have a, a grant to consider, grant number two-three zero seven A, grant application to the Public Defense Commission for Indigent Defense Financial Assistance, one million four hundred and eighty-eight thousand, two hundred and forty-seven dollars. Noah County Max, want to tell us a little bit about this, Mr. Defender?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, good morning. This is ostensibly the last grant from the state as the state takes over the entirety of public defense funding October one, two thousand twenty-four. But this three-point-four-five-eight million goes to, one, sorry, one-point-four-five-eight million goes to attorneys. We have seven attorneys that we hire under this grant. We have two legal assistants, we have an investigator. It also goes to ancillary expenses such as professional services. And as we've discussed, there's been a huge uptick in experts and evaluations that we've had to fund. And so that helps us fund those. We also fund training out of this money. So I would like to give a shout out to people who really hustled to get this done. And before you, today, the clerk's office was fantastic. Daisy got in touch with, with Trent. He was out of the office, but she got in touch with him to get him to sign it. Took time out of his day away from the office to do that. Anne and Judy work fantastic as always. And Heather with Civil got the advice letter. So everybody was, everybody was very helpful getting this done as quick as possible so we could, so we get it out to the Public Defense Commission today. So I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions?
Just, do you have any updates on implementation of the, of the new law?
Yes, Commissioner Daly, the Governor's Office reached out to me last week to indicate that they were dealing with some urgent matters and hadn't been able to put the hiring committee for the State Public Defender together yet. And so they were working on that. So it, it has been delayed. And so they were hoping in the next week to two weeks, the posting would come out. They're still cautiously optimistic that they can get the State Public Defender in position by July first. We shall see. And as soon as the State Public Defender is in position, the State Public Defender puts, whoever he or she is, puts together the transition team and starts filling out the State Public Defender staff. And then by July of two thousand twenty-four, the regional directors will start to be selected in each of the seven judicial districts. So that process will happen. And we're still in ongoing negotiations and discussions about, about funding and how much all of this is going to cost. And at some level, we don't really know until we get into it. And one of the big factors is how much the contract rate is going to be. And that is still unsettled, to be determined. The bill says commensurate with the prevailing market rate, but what is that? The prevailing market rate is different to Blaine County or Cooten County or Ada County than it is in Caribou County, right? So all of those matters have to be resolved. But, but it's moving forward, but it has the hiring panel and the selection of the State Public Defender has been delayed a little bit. Hopefully it'll come out this week or next.
No, it should be noted that the bill is not effective until July first of this year, in any event. So this is just advanced planning in anticipation of July first coming around, as I recall. Okay, any, any other questions on that? Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, we need a motion on, on the grant application.
I move to approve grant number twenty-three oh seven A as listed on the agenda and authorize the Chair to sign the appropriate documents on behalf of the board.
Second.
Hey, you've heard the motion. I'll favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. All right, we have Development Services, Mr. Commissioner Beck.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Just pleased to present for your consideration this morning, the final plat of whole spa, a state subdivision, it's a two-lot subdivision. Staff has reviewed the submission, finds that the applicant has complied with all of the conditions of approval and that the plat complies with county and state laws and recommend that you authorize the Chair to sign and stamp the plats. recommend that, uh, you authorize the chair to sign and stamp the plat.
Okay, any discussion, questions? Here you are, and I'll accept a motion.
Uh, Mr. Chair, I move to approve application number 202201433 dash S, Holesclaw State Subdivision, and authorize the chair to sign the final plat on behalf of the board.
I, uh, second the motion.
Okay, you've heard the motion. All in favor, say aye, aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you, research.
Thank you.
All right, next up, we have Expo Idaho, uh, commercial exhibitor agreements for the Western Idaho Fair, there's, sixteen of them, and we have some concessionaire agreements, there's ten of those. Is there any, uh, questions or, uh, issues? Not, I'll accept a motion.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I move to approve the sixteen commercial exhibitor agreements and ten concessionaire agreements for the 2023, Western Idaho Fair as listed on the agenda, and authorize the chair to sign the documents on behalf of the board.
I second the motion.
Okay, you've heard the motion. All in favor, say aye, aye.
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 Motion carries. Now we have, uh, three agreements, actually. Four, four agreements, one's been removed. Is there any questions or discussions about any agreements?
Anyone talk to the Idaho Power Commercial and Industrial Energy Efficiency Audit?
I expect that question, right. Um, so we're working through, uh, as you know, energy expenses for the operations areas seem to be one of our largest expenses, and so we've engaged with Idaho Power to, do a review, um, one out of the public safety building, and one of the courthouse, to just identify if there's anything that we can do to help save some money, uh, on our energy bills, and that's what the, the audit will do, so, do an assessment of the courthouse force, allows to, uh, identify maybe some potential cost savings for us, uh, in our, uh, energy bills.
Okay. Any other questions or discussions?
Well, on the last one, uh, with, uh, Allied University for courthouse screening, is, is that the one for an additional, or a, or a allied guard at Drug Court? Does anybody know on that one? Where they check in? Nobody knows? Okay.
If you'd like to research that, we can pull that one.
Yeah, if we could get some more info.
All right. Well, then let's, let's accept the motion.
Um, let's. Well, Mr. Chair, I'll move to approve, uh, three agreements as listed on the agenda, table agreement number 15031 dash one dash two three, to,
Next one, to May 23rd.
To May 23rd, 2023.
I second the motion.
Okay.
And authorize the chair to sign the documents on behalf of the board.
All right, for the, yeah, for the other three, for the other, yeah, three. Okay, you've heard the motion. All in favor, say aye, aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. We approved three agreements and table one till May 23rd. All right, next up is the weekly, uh, indigent items. I'll accept a motion on those.
Mr. Chairman, I, I move to accept the recommendation of the indigent, indigent service staff as listed on the summary of cases dated May 16th, 2023, and authorize the chair to sign the documents on behalf of the board.
And I'll second that.
Yeah, you've heard the motion. All in favor, say aye, aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Is there anything else needs to be brought before the board for this, uh? Here you are, we're in recess, thank you. Well, good morning.
Good morning.
What? Uh, today is the 16th day of May, the time is 9:35. Um, all three commissioners are present. You can introduce yourself for the record here.
Uh, Jeremy Shabid. Job like paramedics.
Linda Scopelletti.
Sean Rain, paramedics.
All right, now we have, uh, Lizba, an IT guy. Uh, welcome here. And, clerk, are there any changes to the agenda?
No, there are not.
Okay. Looks like we have an employee recognition. You must be Linda.
I am. Name taxes, so.
Yeah, yeah. I'll read this into the record for, for you, and then we'll proceed. Uh, Linda Scopelletti.
Mm-hmm.
All right, twenty-five years of service to Ada County, thank you. That's, uh, a long achievement. Twenty-five years is a long time to do anything, let alone work as a first responder and see so many hard things. It takes a certain kind of person to settle into the rhythms of emergency medical service. Linda saw the hard stuff for years as a frontline paramedic. Now, as a battalion chief, she is leading a shift of those frontline paramedics and EMTs, and helping them learn what it means to do the job well. Linda started with Ada County Paramedic as a volunteer. After that, she was an EMT, an advanced EMT, a paramedic, a field captain, and a field training officer. She led the hazmat team, the hazmed team, and is now the special events coordinator. Much of what ASP is today be, comes from Linda's contributions. She has a unique and welcome perspective among field leadership, and will continue to shape, who we are and what we are, what we do for several years. We're thankful to have her working with us and for the communities we serve. Is there anyone on your staff or you that would like to say anything?
Mr. Chair, yes, I, you know, I remember, uh, Linda and I working together on an ambulance, and, uh,
We've known each other for twenty years.
Yeah.
Couple years.
Right after she started, I think you were still maybe even a reserve when I first started working with you. So I've known Linda since she was twelve, I think, when she started working with us. No, she was, uh, you were, you were definitely really young when you started, so was I. Um, but, you know, I, I just, uh, I think about all the, the time and getting to know Linda and her family, and just some of the situations that you run into, and running EMS calls, and some of the experiences we've had together, just, uh, you know, things that I'll never forget, so, thank you for all you've done for the county, Linda.
Thank you.
Yes.
Yes, anyone else?
Well, I, I'm, uh, I'm really glad that you're, that you're here. I mean, a, a person's life has a number of bumps and turns and tricky bits, um, and through all that, you, uh, managed to excel, uh, here and do well, and I'm really happy that, um, you're with us. I'm happy that you're in the seat you're in, um, and doing for our people what you're doing.
Thank you. It's, uh, definitely a bumpy road, but, uh, it's been a fun ride as well. I mean, I, I really appreciate working here, and I know that a long time ago, we were told, the day you don't want to be here is the day you should start looking for a new job, and I haven't felt like I needed to do that in any way, shape, or form. Uh, the gentleman sitting here who've, who've stepped into the seats that, uh, we all sat as paramedics side by side, and now are administrators, uh, I appreciate the fact that, uh, they are there. Sean, the fact that you stepped in when you did, thank you. Uh, but, I, I wouldn't do it with anybody else. They're, these guys, I would follow into anything. I appreciate them being here as well.
Thank you.
Well, thank you. Step over here, we'll take a picture and officially give you the recognition.
The official picture.
Yes.
Yay. Buddy.
And we'll plaster it all over Facebook.
Oh, good. You know, I gotta run going this month, so.
Let's. Okay, we gotta switch it. Okay, so, oh, twist it. Are you guys gonna be in the picture?
We will.
Okay.
Yeah.
So.
Always likes to squeeze in.
Could, uh, tall in the back, behind Linda, next to, and then, here we go, and then Linda in your front, kind of right there, on your tiptoes, please.
Don't make me too late.
Duck, duck, duck.
There we go. Make sure I can get, and we're gonna move that chair real quick. All right, this looks really, I'm sorry, Ryan, I don't know where this chair is, remember the chair in the picture? Right. We have to make this an awesome picture.
No, no, fuzzy's good.
I'll make it look really good. Okay. All right, everybody stand up straight, big smiles, all right, here we go, and, very nice. Excellent, okay, got it.
Well, Linda, on behalf of citizens of the county, I give you this award, congratulations for your twenty-five years of service.
Thank you so much.
Linda, can I get a picture of you by yourself holding your plaque? Aw, that's great.
No, that's horrible.
Yeah, it's really good. You are gonna really like this.
Okay.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thanks.
You're welcome to stay, Linda, but you don't have to.
I'm gonna sneak out and put out a couple of my fires.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks again.
Thanks, Linda.
Thank you. You two have to stay.
Nice.
Okay. We'll do the claims journal now. Is there a motion to approve the claims journal?
I move to authorize payment of claims as listed on the claims journal dated, May 16th, 2023 regarding EMS expenditures.
I second the motion.
You've heard the motion. All in favor, say aye.
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 Motion carries, personnel actions, one step increase.
I move to approve the personnel actions as listed on the agenda, and that the summary sheet remain on file in the commissioner's office.
Second.
You've heard the motion. All in favor, say aye.
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 Motion carries. We have two agreements, uh, agreement between Ada County Emergency Medical Services and Centristic Health to create an overdose response training video. Okay, is there any discussions or motion?
I move to, uh, approve the two agreements as listed on the agenda and authorize the chair to, sign the appropriate documents on behalf of the board.
I second the motion.
Okay, you've heard the motion. All in favor, say aye, aye.
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 Motion carries. We have an agreement number 15242, agreement between Ada County and Moore EMS Consulting LLC for Human Resource Management Consulting Services. Is there any discussion or, uh, motion?
Uh, did we have, did you approve both of them at the same time?
No.
Actually, I thought his motion was to approve both of them.
Yes, must be, because it's written two agreements, but.
Well, if we've already approved that one, then fine. Have we approved that one, eh? Okay. We've already approved it. Okay, standby services, hourly rate discussion.
Yes, Mr. Chair, Commissioners, good morning. Uh, it's been a while since we have raised our standby rates, and just with the costs of everything, certainly personnel costs, um, we looked at what we were charging, and, uh, stay ahead of things, we needed to increase our rates for standby services, so, this is anytime we do a standby for, um, it could be anything, it could be a five K run, it could be a concert, um, a variety of things, so it's when, we have, uh, typically two paramedics in an ambulance standing by at an event. If you think of Boise State, we send fourteen people down to those football games because you cram forty thousand people into that small area. It kind of becomes its, a city to itself, and so, um, you know, we have a contracted rate with, with, uh, Boise State on a contract with them, but, this is for kind of the, uh, folks that need a standby, and a lot of times, the standbys are required by somebody's insurance coverage when they wanna do a big event. And, uh, a lot of these smaller, um, you know, I mentioned a five K run, a lot of those things, we end up, giving them what our rate is, but we also tell them, you know, there are private services that can also do this, just to kind of take the burden off of us, uh, on a lot of these standbys, and so, that's really what it is, and, and, uh, in the past, you know, anytime that we increase the rate more than five percent, we have to come to the board to ask permission to do that, so, that was the, the purpose of today.
Okay.
John, did, Jeremy, do you guys have anything to add to that?
No, nope. Sounds good.
Okay, I review those rates, and I think if, if you think those are adequate, then I'd support that. Is there a motion?
Do we need a motion?
I, I think we do. To approve the new rates, yeah.
Yeah, approve the new rates.
Does that have to be a resolution or just a motion?
I don't think it has to be a resolution.
Well, then I'll move to, uh, approve the new standby services, uh, hourly rates.
I'll second the motion.
Okay. You've heard the motion. All in favor, say aye, aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Well, you did a great job, wowed everybody.
It's a, an interesting topic.
Yes, okay, now we have an EMS update.
Just, just as a, a question, and, and for, for the record as well, uh, how, how do you establish that increase?
Uh, we look at what our costs are to send a crew down there, and, uh, just weigh that against the hourly rate, you know, um, equipment, the fuel, the time, because typically, uh, you know, our crews have to show up on, uh, forty-five minutes before the standby, so that they can get the rig checked out, get down to the, the standby on time, and then there's also that travel time on the back end, getting back. Um, leaving a Boise State game, it usually takes our crews about forty-five minutes to an hour, just to drive back up to the Benjamin campus, because the, traffic gets so clogged down there. That's, uh,
Yeah, I just wanted it in the record, so that it was, it was clear why we were establishing.
Yeah, just the increase in personnel costs is the biggest one, um, over the past, uh, several years, so, we haven't raised them, I, I think the last rate increase was, uh, in 2020, was the last time we ra- raised the rate, so.
Okay. All right.
Okay. Yeah, just, just for the record, that's, you're starting on June 1st, 2023.
Correct.
Yeah.
Yep.
Is that, uh, required for events, big events at Boise, you know, permits, like, is that usually part of the contract that they have to do?
Yes, Mr. Chair, Commissioner Davidson, they, Boise City has a special event committee, and in fact, Linda, uh, who is just here, sits on that committee, and they come to the committee, describe their event, and, and they're actually building a matrix. And we tried to build one, uh, for the county years ago, when we still had an EMS ordinance, but since we don't have one, an EMS ordinance anymore, uh, we, we kind of did away with that idea, but it describes things on, like, uh, event size, uh, if they have alcohol, that adds to the, the likelihood that we're gonna have to get involved in treating somebody, and so, uh, they'll get down to a, a portion, doesn't mean that they have to use us, but it means that they're gonna have to provide ambulance service. It's when we get to the events, the size of Boise State, um, even like Boise Music Festival, those bigger events where we have to put, you know, fourteen people, um, down there, the fair is a good example. You know, we, we, uh, do that same. The fair is a good example. You know, we do that standby service for Bob. But it requires so many people, a lot of the services in the area just couldn't, they couldn't put fourteen people in an area because they may not even employ that many people. So, but the smaller events, typically, they'll say, yeah, you need to have ambulance service. And a lot of times, it is a requirement of their insurance. But then they get a list of options. We're one of them, but they don't have to use us. They can use a private service, and a lot of them do. But I think the last big event we did was the Race to Robie Creek. And that requires a lot. You know, we have ATBs that where you have to be able to travel that course. We have a, it's Kawasaki mule, you know, a side-by-side that actually has the equipment to accept our gurney into it so that we can actually put a patient, kind of like what you see at the football games when they take them out of the stadium. Ours is just a little beefier since you can think about, you know, driving to Robie Creek or what have you. But to get them to a spot where we can put them in an ambulance, so.
Okay.
Yep.
All right. Now, if you'd like to give us your EMS update.
Yes, Mr. Chair. The, like I start off with, nothing's really changed with COVID. Last week, the public health emergency officially ended. So this may be the last time that I come in and tell you about COVID. Unless something happens. Yeah, we all hope so.
We hope.
Outside of that, you know, our office has been busy. We did yesterday, all of us were down at our Glenwood facility doing kind of a spring cleanup day, just making room for things. We have a lot of things that we need to store, and we have a lot of area to store it. But one of the requests that came in during the budget process this year was for a new shed. And instead of buying a new shed, we went down and got rid, shedded ourselves of a lot of stuff that we, that was just sitting there and hadn't been touched for years. So operations was good enough to lend us a dump truck. And I think we filled it wet twice. And with just stuff that somebody thought might be useful ten years ago, and it's been gathering dust and cobwebs, so that was a good thing. The only other thing of note, we had a, the swamp cooler at our station down on Glenwood started leaking through the roof and into the ceiling. So while we were down there, we discovered that part of the ceiling had collapsed. And so we had to shovel out all of that wet insulation. So operations, they're on top of it, but we'll get it fixed. But that's really all I have for the update today.
Didn't realize you had swamp coolers.
Yeah, we use, actually, we use the swamp coolers to keep our garages cool. So, you know, by the time we start an ambulance and get down the road, it takes a while for that back of the ambulance to either heat or cool. So most of our stations have swamp coolers in them. It's more efficient than trying to air condition the garage. But in the stations where we haven't had those, you'll get in the ambulance. And even with the garage door closed, it'll still be ninety-plus degrees in there. And you can imagine, if you're going on somebody with heat exhaustion, the last place you want to put them is the back of a hot ambulance. So helps us keep those things cool.
All right. Any EMS technicians, how do you respond to overdose?
No, Mr. Chair, Commissioner Davidson's intention to do is to post that video up on the website that so that anybody could go there and access that training. John may know a little bit more about it.
Yeah, really is going to be posted to Department of Health and MBI.
And at one point in time, I heard that John Blake was actually going to be the primary actor in this training video.
Chief, I'm sorry you heard incorrectly.
Really?
Playing the guy who just parties a little too hard on the weekend, and now he's overdosed, or what?
This would not be the first time I've been voluntold.
I asked him about the Noxalone kits and the new state law and you guys.
How the state could distribute the Narcan to organizations within the state. And it actually requires that it be a first responder organization that does the distribution. So the state came to us, being the largest EMS agency in the state, to see if we would take that on. And so I had a meeting with them yesterday just to get my mind wrapped around what would that entail. I have Dayton Reed with the PA's office looking at all of the stuff. And so I'll probably be coming back to you in a couple of weeks just to fill you in on what that means. And the request did come from the governor's office. From what I understand, the Department of Health and Welfare went to the governor with four different options. And this is the option that he wanted them to pursue, was to go through one agency. So we're taking a look at it.
Okay. Well, good luck. Do you have anything else?
That's it.
That's it. We'll be in recess.
Okay.
Good morning. Today's May the sixteenth. The time is nine fifty-five. The Board of Commissioners is in session, sitting as the Board of Avamore Community Infrastructure District Number One, to conduct our weekly open business meeting. Are there any changes to the agenda, Madam Clerk?
No, there are not.
Okay, we have the claims journal. Pay some bills. I'll accept a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move to authorize payment of claims on claims journal dated May twelfth, twenty twenty-three regarding Avamore CID expenditures.
I'll second that.
Okay, you've heard the motion. All in favor say aye.
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 We next have approval of the minutes. Is there a motion?
I move to approve the minutes as identified on the agenda and authorize the chair to sign the documents on behalf of the board.
I second the motion.
You've heard the motion. All in favor say aye.
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 Is there any further business needs to be taken before the Avamore Community Infrastructure District Number One open business meeting? There are none? We're in recess.